All right, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting for February. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. If you could all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard, here. Mayor Buell, here. Counselor Brown, here. Counselor Champlin, here. Counselor Fennessey, present. Counselor Grady Sexton.
She's excused.
Counselor Key.
In the back.
Counselor Kretovic, here. Counselor Mattson, here. Counselor McLaughlin, here. Counselor McNamara, here. Counselor Nian, present. Counselor Pierce, here. Counselor Rice Hawkins, here. And Counselor Todd.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We have two sets of minutes before us. We have the minutes of January 30 and January 10. If we can get a motion to take both of them at one time, is that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the minutes of January 30 and January 10. Is there any discussion, comments, changes? Seeing none, ready for question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Motion is adopted. It is now my pleasure to introduce Paul Lloyd for a presentation for the New Hampshire State Veterans Advisory Committee. Welcome to the spot up and join us.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, I actually have a couple of things tonight, but the first one.
Whatever you want, you can take as long as you want.
I won't do that.
But I'm thinking this Valentine's Day, now you've got places to be.
Noted. The first is, I would come here, request that the City Council approve to be recognized as a Purple Heart community. As most everybody knows, the Purple Heart is specifically a combat decoration, and it is our nation's oldest military medal. The purpose of the Purple Heart community is to create a tribute to the men and women who have been awarded the Purple Heart Medal. With the presence of the signs designating our city as a Purple Heart community, the public will have a visual reminder of the sacrifices paid by the Purple Heart recipients, and a notice that our city supports the military heroes who have made sacrifices for the way of life all of our residents enjoy. I do have pictures of the sign, if no one has seen them before. I can pass them around, too, if you'd like.
That'd be great.
That's fine. Thank you. So, I have talked to the city manager, and I've let him know that this project will not come at a cost to the city. The veterans organizations have already raised enough money for eight signs. We haven't decided which post they'll go on, whether it's a wooden post or a metal post. We're going to chat with the general services gurus to get their input on that. So, we were thinking that probably seven total for the city, maybe eight, and then do a proclamation and a signing ceremony probably in May after the winter and the mud season.
Okay.
That's basically it in a nutshell.
Okay. Before I—does anybody have any questions or thoughts?
Thank you, Your Honor. Paul, am I correct in my understanding that the Purple Heart is awarded to any service member who is wounded in combat? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So, why don't I suggest this? Probably the most efficient way to do this, assuming there's no objection, is to have you work with the manager, and then the manager will bring something back formally to us.
Okay.
And then we can take formal action.
Okay.
And then that way, everybody's clear on exactly what it is, you know, not just a picture of—
Yes, sir.
But let's talk about the details and such.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Ms. Manager?
Certainly does.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Great. Perfect.
Good.
Next.
So, the last thing, I want to talk about the Memorial Day Parade. We kind of skipped out on the last couple of years because of the pandemic. I have been chatting with the band leaders from the schools. They're excited to get out and do it again, but they did have a request that we shorten the parade route. So, we kind of came up with a compromise that we're still working with, but it will actually start at St. John's School down on the south end, the church parking lot. Come up Main Street, hang a left at Park Street, and go around the State House, and do the ceremony speeches at the plaza as we normally do. And that—the school band, actually from Ron Lett, is the one that requested that. And then, because the last time we changed the parade route, we kind of ignored the tradition of Ward Four, so we will—the compromise areas will go to the Old North Cemetery after the ceremony, lay the wreath, and do taps there for those that want to see that.
Okay. It might actually make it easier for viewing for the community, considering having walked in a few times, you get a big gap.
Barge gap.
Yeah, okay, that, too. That's the most exercise I get all year.
Me, too.
Any questions or thoughts or suggestions? Again, you'll work with the manager on—
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're always safe.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And next, it is my pleasure to welcome Chris Tardif from the Conservation Commission. You have lots of titles. I'll call you Madam Chair. How's that?
Very good, very good. And I had some slides, but the thumb drive's not working, so we'll go with apologies for the trees. I can pass them around. There should be enough. Well, those are going around. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Chris Tardif. I'm the current chair of your conquered Conservation Commission. So, welcome to our new city councillors. I've met some of you already, but not all. And during this period of transition, we also want to give a special thanks out to Counselor Todd, who has served with us for the past, I think, three-plus years, and we're welcoming Counselor Brown on as our new council representative. We are here tonight because the Conservation Commission is celebrating its 50th anniversary. So, when we realized that, we thought that warranted a look back for ourselves and all of you, and for the community, for what the commission has done over that time. So, we did prepare a special report that is linked in your January meeting minutes, and I would encourage you to all take a look at that. But in the meantime, we wanted to highlight a few things for you tonight. So, if you look at your second slide, in 1971, the City Council created the Conservation Commission. We are charged with protecting, promoting, and developing the city's natural resources, and also protecting the watershed resources of the city. So, there's a lot that falls under that umbrella. There's a few items there. But I think one of the things that is worth mentioning is that our very first open space plan, which was adopted in 1978, was aptly named "A Legacy for Future Generations," and certainly because every decision we make as a community to protect open spaces and natural resources provides benefits for both current and future residents. And so, that's something that we think actively about in our decision-making process. We gave a little bit of history for you there in the third slide. The first conservation acquisitions in the city were on both sides of the river. On the east side of the river, in the Oak Hill area, which continues to be a very popular area for hiking, that was identified initially as a recreation area, and it really continues to serve that purpose today. If you move a little south, then, there were a couple of acquisitions in Turtle Town or the Turtle Pond area, and then further south in the Broken Ground area. And again, those areas continue to be conservation-focused areas for us because of the resources there. On the west side of the river, the very first conservation acquisitions are where Broad Cove Forest and Lettinen Park are located. And building from that base, one of the things the Conservation Commission has strived to do over time is to conserve additional lands where lands have already been conserved. We know that creating these large, unfragmented blocks of conservation land, that connectivity really helps to give added protection to the natural resources, and also contributes to the resiliency of those natural resources. And, you know, resiliency is something I think the commission has always thought about in our work, but I know this City Council is dealing with climate change as you think about kind of the city's goals in the future, and so resiliency is something that's really kind of built into what we do in terms of our natural resources. On Slide four, which is kind of watershed and water resources protection, that, of course, is one of the things the commission is charged to protect. Those efforts over the years have included conservation of lands along our rivers, tributaries, and certainly wetlands, which all contribute to the health of our water resources in the city. The photograph on the left, which I realize is a little small in your reprint, but that's a Vernal Pool on what we know as the Haller property, which is located adjacent to the lands preserved along Pennacook Lake. That acquisition, which occurred in 2017, is an excellent example of both protection of that watershed for Pennacook Lake. It's also a really good example of how the commission really looks to take advantage of grants that are out there to help us protect our natural resources. So, in this particular case, the city received grant funds from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, aquatic resources mitigation grant funds, known as the ARM grants, and also local source water protection program grants. And so, we were able to kind of leverage money from the conservation funds to access those grants and obtain those for conservation. So, that's something that we look to do in a lot of our conservation efforts, to really kind of extend our conservation dollars for the maximum benefit. If we move then to the Broken Ground slide—I mentioned Broken Ground earlier is one of the very first conservation areas. That's another area where we have looked to kind of expand that. It has been longtime a conservation-focused area for us, and I flagged that because the Broken Ground acquisition back in 2013, I think it was, the City Council authorized the use of a bond it had approved in 2002 to acquire 270 acres out in Broken Ground and kind of continue that conservation area out there. That was certainly an acquisition, when I think back, that just had resounding public support for both the use of the bond and the conservation of that land, you know, particularly among residents on the east side. So, there are a lot of residential neighborhoods that have access to that land, can walk to that land. It was fairly popular land for use. So, when it was threatened with development, we really heard from a lot of people in this community about the importance of preserving that. So, there is a trail network laid out on that that's heavily used. It's a wonderful trail network. I also flagged it because it is the first time that we have partnered with the New Hampshire chapter of the New England Mountain Bike Association and developed a trail out there that was designed for mountain bike use. And when we think about kind of multiple use of these conservation lands in a manner that doesn't conflict with the natural resources, there's certainly a demand for use beyond hiking. So, that mountain bike trail was our first kind of effort in that regard. On Slide six, I wanted to highlight agricultural lands. That's another kind of component of what the commission has looked to have actively been preserving over the last 50 years. Of course, has a long history of agriculture in this community. I think we've heard from a number of sources that have been talked over the years that we may be the only state capital that has active agricultural fields within sight of the state capital, which is really something unique. In my working life, I've actually spent a lot of time out in Iowa, which is covered with corn and soybean fields. There are no corn or soybean fields within the sight of the state capital, so that is really something special. We know that suitable or sustainable local agriculture in our community requires land, and not just any land, but land that has those prime agricultural soils or soils of state significance. And certainly, the cost of land is kind of a burden for farmers. There's a lot of pressure on development of those lands. So, in terms of the efforts of the commission with the work of City Council over the last 50 years, there's been preservation of lands along the river, which is really kind of vital, prime ag soils in the city. But we also have, you know, what I like to think of as a necklace of farms along the west side, where conservation easements have been placed. So, those working local farms remain part of our community. If we move on to Slide seven, the trail system. So, you know, we conserve our land and natural resources to protect those natural resources, but there are benefits for us as a community that extend beyond that. And I think our trail system is certainly the highlight of that. The first trails in the city started with the very first acquisitions out in the Oak Hill area in Broken Round, and have continued to grow from there. And so, today, we have over 80 miles of public trails on our conservation lands, which is just a tremendous resource for all of us. I think in the last few years with the COVID-19 pandemic, we saw a tremendous increase in the use of those trails. Residents of our city, many discovering those trails for the very first time. So, that's certainly—it's just—it's a wonderful resource. It's a bit of an added strain on those lands, but I think one that we are managing. We now have Ranger Mel, who is working with city staff to kind of help monitor those trails and to make sure that our continued use of those trails by the public is kind of consistent with our conservation values. But the City Planning Board recently adopted the City Trails Plan, which kind of took a step back and looked at trails throughout the city, and that'll become a good planning document for us in the future as we look to grow that trail system. Maybe there's some areas where we have to contract a little bit, where we've got conflicts with natural resources value, but that's something we're certainly committed to, and we have a very dedicated group of trail volunteers who work to keep that system going. So, the next slide, I had to include in there because I think many of you worked with Marjorie Swolp over the years. It's a good example of—the Marjorie Swolp Park was created when her husband donated 70-plus acres of land to the city for a park in her name. You know, Marge was definitely a visionary in this area, very committed to conservation efforts in the city, and really had the tenacity to make sure that that vision was implemented with the goals of the public in mind. So, the Swolp Park is just a great example of kind of the partnership of people coming together. So, we had a donation of land. We worked with Five Rivers Conservation Trust and St. Paul School, which has been a partner for us on a lot of projects over the years to make that area accessible, and that's really one of our most popular trails here on the west side of town. There's a slide in there on Ron Klimarzick I won't spend a lot of time with. He's our consultant forester, but really an integral part of a lot of what he did. I would say any of you who have an opportunity to take a walk in the woods someday with Ron should do that. It's an education. He probably knows the conservation lands and open space in the city maybe better than anybody, and just has a wealth of knowledge, but he's put in a lot of hard work there. Our special report in one slide here include a listing of the previous Conservation Commission members. We think it's fairly complete. A lot of research went in. And I guess the one thing I wanted to highlight for you in that regard is that what struck me is the number of people who have spent not just a few years on the Conservation Commission, but in many cases, decades. You know, so we have people like Terry Frost, who's pictured here, and Wynne Robinson, who, for me, go hand-in-hand because they seem to always be working together on projects. But, you know, they served for 15 and 20 years, respectively, or plus, on the commission. Kit Morgan, who was our last chair—that was chair when I started, was on the commission for over 25 years. So, there's really kind of a great commitment by the people of the city to the work, and the folks who have put in time. Like I said, decades is just remarkable. There's a list there of our current folks. As of the time we prepared the special report, you know, again, we have grown and have a dedicated trail subcommittee now, and they are supplemented by trail stewards. So, we have a trail steward on each of the trails through the city, and they're responsible for walking those trails periodically and reporting back if there are problems. And we also have a tree subcommittee that was reconstituted in recent years. So, that's about all I have. I think I wanted to close by saying, you know, thank you. The City Council is, of course, an important partner with the commission in every decision we make or every recommendation we make to you to conserve conservation land. We are looking forward to the next 50 years of kind of productive work together, and, you know, looking to kind of achieve the goals and purposes for which the commission was created. So, I'm happy to take any questions, but thank you, and I hope you'll join us in celebrating 50 very productive years in the area of conservation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time. Is anybody have any questions for the chair?
All right.
I just want to say thank you for your volunteer effort, and to all the members of the commission, we take your advice and guidance very seriously, and so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda this evening. Before I take a motion on the consent agenda, I will simply note that I am 25. I have a conflict recusing myself. I have a business in the building which is being discussed, and item 21, Counselor Kretovic is recusing herself since she is actually the contributor. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the consent agenda, noting items 21 and 25, myself and Counselor Kretovic. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted. Madam Clerk, that takes us to our public hearings this evening, and I believe the first item is item 41A, please.
Yes. Consent ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title IV Zoning Code, Chapter 28 Zoning Ordinance, Article 28-2 Zoning Districts and Allowable Uses, Section 28-2-4 Allowable Principal and Accessory Uses in Zoning Districts by amending the Table of Principal Use E Medical. And you recessed this public hearing from last one.
So, before I come out of recess, I would like to recognize, let me see, Mr. Manager or Mr. Baye, since we now have, I think, a report number three, perhaps?
Right. Mr. Baye, supplemental report three.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council.
Good evening, your honor, members of council. So the city's zoning ordinance currently includes use category E3, which allows offices of healthcare practitioners, including clinics and outpatient healthcare. It allows it by right in nine of the city's 10 districts that would allow commercial. And so it allows it by condition use permit in one of those districts as well. The proposed amendment before you tonight would change use category E3 to solely offices of healthcare practitioners, and the zoning districts in which this use would be allowed would not be changed. The proposed amendment would also create a new use category E6 for clinics providing outpatient procedures, walk-in services, urgent care, and substance use disorder treatment. Under the original proposed amendment, this new use category permitted to the same districts as category E3 with the exception of the central business performance district, which is basically downtown Concord and downtown Pennacook, as well as the commercial neighborhood or CN zoning districts. And then at your January meeting, you opted to include general commercial or CG also in this amendment. Areas of CG include, for example, Loudon Road largely from Hazen Drive to the Monte Drive, swaths of Fisherville Road, also the area of south of Exit 12 in Concord, right before you get to the Bowtown line, and a portion of Village Street from Borough Road to the Woodlawn Cemetery. I want to make clear that even with the inclusion of the CG district, clinics would still continue to be permitted in the majority of the zoning districts that allow for commercial. It also is important to note that health clinics that you might see inside of pharmacies or retail businesses and medical offices in CBP, CN, or CG, they would remain unaffected by this proposed amendment as long as the clinic does not constitute the primary use of that establishment. Also, at the last meeting, I believe some concerns were raised about certain organizations in our community that have offices or, I should say, facilities in some of these districts. And so I have reached out and spoken directly to the executive director of the Equality Health Center. I've also spoken to the director of Riverbend and to the director of Fellowship Housing, all three who had some questions. And I've tried to allay all their concerns. I believe they were satisfied with the answers. Basically, they would be unaffected by these changes based on the description of the services that they provide. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Roger, any questions for our Mr. Baye?
Thank you. So just to that last point, was it your understanding that based on the services that were provided at those three clinics that you spoke with, that they would not be impacted by this change? Is that your understanding?
Correct. And I wouldn't call them clinics based on descriptions that they provided. That's why they wouldn't be affected by this.
Okay. Any further? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So this time, I'm going to come out of recess for item 41A, and we'll go back into our public hearing mode. Is there anyone wishing to like to comment? And it would be helpful if you commented specifically to the supplemental ordinance number three.
Do I come up?
Yeah, you're welcome. Come on up, join us.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind just sharing with us your name and tell us your thoughts.
Sure. My name is Kim Buck. I'm the executive director with the New Hampshire Coalition of Recovery Residences in Concord. And I just want to have you reflect a little bit on the state of substance use disorder in the United States and New Hampshire right now. We know that overdoses are at an all-time high across the country, and New Hampshire and Concord is really challenged, much more than many other states with that. The good news is that we know that from national studies, 75% of people who suffer with addiction maintain long-term recovery. That's really exciting to me. There's real potential for coming out of the other side of this whole crisis. That can only happen when services are available. I want to encourage you to take a good, hard look at this. Are services going to be limited to people in recovery? People in recovery often don't have their license. That's been removed. So they need walkable services or public transportation. So when you're thinking about where things should be zoned, I really encourage you to think about if not there, where? Where will it be? Where will it be available to the people that desperately need those services? If they have the services, recovery is real possible. If the services aren't attainable, we can't begin to fight the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I really appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to share their thoughts? Okay, then at this time, we're actually going to close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 41B, please.
It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, Title V administrative code, Chapter 35 classification and compensation plan, Schedule D of Article 35-2 class specification index for the network security engineer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Your honor, members of the council, you approved this, adding this position from the financial standpoint in a previous meeting. Now you need to simply amend the ordinance to be able to include this position going forward.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 41C, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the annual appraisal of real estate at market value per RSA 75E-B.
Mr. Manager.
Your members of the council, the city council has voted to authorize the annual evaluation of assessments since 2005, and the assessing office has been assessing properties annually since, at market value since 2004. We're requesting that you continue with that practice.
Any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify? Good evening, you're welcome.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council, city manager, city clerk. I'm Roy Schweitzer. And as I said last year, this seems like one of the more peculiar laws in the state. Why should you have to vote every year to do the appraisal annually when that seems like a good thing and not a bad thing? One would think that it could be done once until you change it. But if I'm here, I will take advantage of the opportunity to say that I believe we should do this, and I believe we are doing a very poor job of assessing the city. And therefore, we should take this to heart and actually properly assess the property annually. Right now, we have kind of a two-tiered system that if you have residential property and your house and neighborhood gets sold, then you mark up all the property in the neighborhood. And in a way, that's unfair because usually people fix up the property before they sell it. So the sale price does not reflect probably the average price, but the price of the property that isn't fixed up most recently, so it's higher than the rest of them should be. Whereas at the same time for commercial property, that's not done. In fact, sometimes it seems to be just the reverse. I decided tonight I'd bring some examples of this. There was a situation where the Capital Plaza was sold to a developer, and he actually bragged to the Concord Monitor what a good price he got on it. And instead, he managed to get the assessment changed to a million dollars less than what he paid for the property. I mean, if this had been a residential property, all the other property around it would have been marked up. But he convinced them, no, you should instead mark mine down to what the surrounding property is. And that doesn't seem very reasonable to me, but anyway, that's the Capital Plaza, 5781 North Main, if anyone wishes to look into that. Another example is the Capital Hotel 6, which is the new hotel down by Exit 12. And once again, the developer bought that as a tear down. And so he paid a substantial sum, like $3 million, for the existing hotel, tore it down, and built a fine new one. But the valuation of the property is still essentially the old valuation. Now, one might think that if you pay $3 million to tear a building down, then that property, without that building, is worth $3 million. So not only your assessment should be $3 million, but other similar properties should also be increased to that extent. But no, it's only assessed at $1 million. So theoretically, we might be losing not only on that property, but all similar property in the city. And incidentally, the luxury neighborhood building is another example of that, that once again, the value of the real estate there is far below what was paid for the thing with the building, even though once again, that was a tear down. I don't think anyone thought the developer was going to retain that old building. He put a new building on it. But once again, he paid $900,000 for the lot, but it's only assessed for $300,000 because that's what the lot was for. Not marking up the commercial property when it's sold, although you are the residential property. And there's a somewhat similar thing, that, you know, most people, the city assessor assesses their property, and, you know, they either have to take it or appeal it. But apparently utilities, they assess their own property, and it's not audited. Because this is something else I've mentioned before, is we had a situation where we spent $2 million bearing utilities on South Main Street, but less than a million of that was the utilities themselves. A million was the general contractor's money to dig it up and put it back and so forth. And so I asked how they apportioned that cost among utilities. And the city engineer at that time said he didn't. He wasn't an assessor. He had no means of assessing the extra million dollars among utilities, so he simply didn't do it. He didn't tell them what their share of it was. And the city assessor said, well, she didn't know anything about, you know, constructing utilities. But under law, the utilities do their own assessments, and they're required to certify that their assessments are reasonable, and she's got no means of auditing them to see whether they in fact did distribute that million dollars among the utilities or not. And now, once again, I don't know how, if I was one of those utilities, I would have distributed the million dollars. I probably simply would have included it. And certainly, if you ask me, I would knock $20,000 off my assessment and certify that that's a legitimate price because my place hasn't been fixed up like all the ones they're getting the comparable values for. So I think, and once again, you're letting commercial properties do their own assessing, whereas you're not, you know, letting individuals do their own assessing. And I would be interested if any of the city councillors had the interest in this to say, we want a report from the assessing department on how come we're not increasing the values of commercial property when they're sold like we do with the residential property. And then the last complaint I have has to do with visible and non-visible values. I mean, the problem I have is that if I try to appeal my assessment, they'll say, oh, well, you know, all the other properties went up, so yours is the same. And I'll say, well, I don't have granite countertops. I don't have stainless steel appliances. My value should be less. But I don't have x-ray vision. I can't prove that none of the other properties aren't in bad shape as mine. So how do I claim that I deserve a lower assessment? So it's really hard to get your building value knocked down. On the other hand, you would say, well, anybody can see what the property itself looks like, the lot. You know, that's easy. You can see who's got a paved driveway, who's got nice landscaping, all that sort of stuff. Well, interestingly, when you're left in Concord, that's not part of the assessment. There's just a fixed value for the lot and a very small value for any additional size. No grading whatsoever for whether your driveway is paved or not, nothing for whether you have good landscaping or not. And I asked one of the deputy assessors, you know, wasn't this reasonable? And she said, well, yes. A paved driveway, number one, costs you money to build it, and number two, makes your property more valuable, so it should go in the assessment. But that's not the way we do it in Concord. And I'll give you an example. We have a property at 8 to 10 Chapel Street that's eight tenths of an acre, and the assessment is 89.2. Across the street, you have 11 Chapel Street. It's .16 acres, so it's twice the size. It's assessed at $90,600. So there's a difference of $1,400 out of $90,000. For a property that's double the size, has a huge paved parking lot, but, you know, even though that's perfectly visible and something you could actually, you know, use for valuation without going in people's houses, the city simply doesn't do it. And my property right now is assessed at $817,000 an acre. I mean, I think that's quite a bit. I mean, for example, the luxury neighborhood building downtown is only assessed for $573,000. So my property is one and a half times as valuable as the luxury neighborhood building lot downtown. The Capital Hotel we were just talking about, that's $556,000 an acre. And once again, I'm paying over 50% more than these buildings downtown. You know, they haul the snow away after every storm. They plow the sidewalks. They take care of the trees. They pick up the litter, all at the city's expense. If I want litter picked up, I have to do it myself. And now they don't haul the snow away. They plow it up on the sidewalk. So if I want the sidewalk cleared, I got to shovel off the sidewalk, not just the snow that falls on it, but just half the snow from the street. So, you know, realistically, we should have the downtown services team move to Chapel Street because I'm paying more per acre than downtown is, at least based on these. So I really wish, you know, the city would get a handle on how come the commercial property is not paying their fair share. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Schweitzer? Seeing none. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll recess until March. Madam Clerk, item 41D, please.
Yes, it's a resolution appropriating the sum of $67,637 to continue the work of reducing energy usage at the Hall Street wastewater treatment plant, CIP number 104, and accepting the sum of $67,637 from the Unitil New Hampshire Saves Energy Efficiency Incentive Rebate Program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Your members of the council, under that program, the department, we anticipated this when we did the project, and we've offset approximately 30% of the cost of the recently completed airator blower replacement project at the Hall Street wastewater treatment plant. The airation blower replacement project was completed as part of the wastewater division's ongoing energy efficiency initiative originally established and funded by the council as part of the FY 2019 budget. So the recommendation is that you accept these dollars, $67,637, in rebate funds. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none of the public hearing, anyone wishing to testify on this item? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 41E, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $18,771 to launch an e-bike bookmobile outreach program and accepting the sum of $18,771 using federal American Rescue Plan Act grant funds for this purpose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Members of the council, the Concord Public Library created a bike bookmobile program to perform innovative outreach services across the city and serve and promote library services to new community members, and finally, to develop community partnerships that will enhance the quality of life for all citizens of Concord. In order to launch the program, the library will purchase two e-bikes and two trailers from the local bike shop, SNW Sports, as well as necessary riding and maintenance equipment. The bike shop is eager to partner with the library in the form of providing bike and trailer maintenance and event partnerships. The two bookmobiles, so to speak, are being fabricated by a company from Maine and provide cargo capacity for materials, supplies, and equipment. The bookmobiles will be branded with the library's colors, logo, and a new slogan to capture community interest. As part of this grant, we've also purchased two Wi-Fi hotspots to travel with the bike so that we can log on to our computer systems and access the same data as we could at our permanent facilities. This tremendous amount of outreach opportunities that we'll now have, beginning with new partnerships with the city's park and recreation department, SNW Sports. The library staff have been meeting with the department to discuss events for the bike bookmobile program that we can enhance. Some of these events, like the haunted hike, the Easter egg hunts, the soccer jamborees, and the games, picnics at the park for older adults, and so forth, will be, are just different examples. SNW Sports also participates in local events such as bike rodeos, and they have identified as opportunities for the bike bookmobile program. Beyond these partnerships, the library has had great success with storytimes in the park during the summer, attracting as many 60 adults and children to these events. The bike bookmobile would have the ability to circulate and give books away at these events and promote, excuse me, promote library service and resources. Annual event sessions, national nights out, market days, haunted house, and the city's multicultural festivals are unique opportunities to reach new community members. The library staff will order all the materials outlined in the grant, and will hope that we can have the program operational by this supplement. If you have any questions?
Read the whole report?
Pretty much. You've read it, but the community hasn't. You've read it, but the community hasn't, wouldn't be aware of it, so.
There we go.
Save that for reading.
Any questions? I'll be already read. Councilor Pierce.
Quick question. Who is driving these bicycles?
It will be staff.
It will be staff?
It will be staff. That's why they're e-bikes.
Sorry, I missed that.
That's right. So, you know, I would be able to do it, so. Not that I'm going to be doing it, but I would be able.
I'd like to see that.
Me too. Downhill.
Counselor O'Sullivan.
Thank you. I also had a few questions about just the logistics around it. So it sounds like this would be a service that would be time limited to the spring, summer, and fall, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, do we feel comfortable that that bike mobile will actually be able to get out to Penna Cook or up to the heights for some of these outreach activities?
Absolutely, yeah.
Awesome. And then, how many, do we have a sense of how many books that will hold? Because I looked at some pictures online, and I was, they seem small.
Yeah. Come on? I don't have that level of detail.
That's right.
I don't have a total number. It's not going to certainly hold, like, you know, four or 500 items. It's going to be a much smaller capacity for that, but we also have storage units on it, so we can kind of add that potentially a backpack as well. The e-bikes are, you know, they're pedal assist, so getting up the hill, getting out to Penna Cook, they can go up to 18 miles an hour if we need to, so you can actually turn off the pedaling portion of it. So as far as canvassing Concord, they can go, you know, anywhere.
If I may follow up. And then, in terms of the outreach programs, in reading the application, it seemed like you're really trying to reach underserved populations. I was curious if you knew yet what types of books or what types of languages or translation services you'll be using for those, for this program.
Yeah, it's a good question. It really depends on when we figure out our schedule, where we're going to be, and what events we're going to build around. So certainly for, like, multicultural festival, we'll tailor the collection for that, for those items there, for those individuals. National Night Out will be a little bit different, we'll probably have more giveaways, more children's items. So the nice thing about it and housing at the library is that we can rotate the collection quite a bit to pertain to the event that we're about to, you know, attend. So it allows us flexibility so that we can kind of move around and figure out what we think is going to be utilized most. And of course, as we get closer to a schedule, we'll kind of print something like a bus schedule, sort of thing. So we'll say, okay, we're going to be here Tuesday, here at Penna Cook on Thursday. What's the event? And then, once we have some data, we'll figure out then, you know, what works, what the community's demands are, and kind of what the usage rates are. So it'll be kind of an exciting, you know, endeavor that we don't have any data for yet, so we'll kind of see how it goes.
I did have a follow-up from that. So it sounds like it's going to be for borrowing books more than book giveaways?
Yeah, it depends. If it's, if it's like a festival-type atmosphere, or an event where we think we really want to get items in people's hands permanently, we'll do that. And then if it's more of a, kind of our user base, and it's more our current users, then we'll probably do more of a collection lending model like we would traditionally do now. So it really depends on who we're trying to reach with, with a different event. So we can design it, you know, two different ways, and it's small enough that we can easily empty the two out, you know, redo it the next day for a totally different purpose.
And I have one other follow-up. Thank you. And is your intention that, for like the bigger events, that you'd have the bookmobile, and then also bring books separately for like a table display?
Yep, exactly. So, yeah, the bikes can also, they don't necessarily, they can be a piece of the event, you know, they could be, so like, National Night Out, they're great just to be there as advertising marketing materials. We can also, we always drive there, we bring a car full of books, and we give away a bunch of items there and swag. So it can, it can be a complimentary piece, you know, in a, in a setting like that.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Also?
Yep.
Councilor Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. So is it possible that people could request particular materials? Like, if you are, like, if you're building your base of where you're going, and people could give you feedback, maybe you would be asking, you know, what kinds of things that they're looking for, if you're going to be going to a particular area, and you can start working that into how you move around the city with different things?
Yeah, for days when we do the lending model, you can do an ILO request just like you could now. We're also going to have two hotspots, so each bike will have a hotspot, so we can actually pull out the laptop onsite, and you can put a hold on right there, and then the next day, or the next time, we're going to be in the area, we can just set it up for, you know, to be a part of the delivery for that day.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Jepson.
Your Honor, Councilor Mattson asked my question.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, one of mine. My second question was, do you envision this being a way to get more families to sign up for a library card, and would that be part of the process?
Absolutely. We want to get out into the community with these items, that's why we, you know, came up with this model. Not just the Heights, all different parts of Concord. You know, Concord, there's some hard-to-reach spots, you know, and so there's, there's always events going on all over the town, so we'd really like to visibly, you know, tangibly be in the community in some areas that are new to us, and we'll kind of see what kind of reception that we get at parks and events and trails and, you know, all kinds of schools, you know, you name it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah?
Anyone else? This is a really practical question. Where are you going to store these, please?
They're likely going to be stored in the library next door, and we have a few different spots for it. We potentially may store one also up at the Heights Community Center. So it really, it depends where we're going to be branching out the most. But we have some options, and also, potentially at the comp, if we end up doing a lot more to the north, the north side. So, you know, we'll kind of see what the schedule dictates.
Okay. I know the manager says that he can do this, but are you going to actually do any training for the folks who are going to drive?
Oh, yeah. And I, yeah, I actually haven't ridden any bike yet, so it's going to be an interesting, interesting experience. I'm not going to videotape it.
All right. I appreciate that. Counselor Brown.
I just want to ask, how do you charge the e-bike? How will that be charged?
It just plugs in overnight, just an adapter.
A regular outlet?
Mm-hmm.
Are they heavy, the bikes? Will somebody be able to lift them? I know some e-bikes are pretty heavy.
They're, they're much heavier than a traditional bike would be, so.
About one person?
That's why when we get them in the library, they're going to go in the elevator, kind of thing. They're not something you want to keep, you know, moving around. Plus, when the trailer hitches on it, you know, that obviously adds some more weight. That's why I went with the pedal assist model, the e-bike, because you can imagine a hot July day, the staff, you know, trudging that thing up, loud in the road. We thought, give them some extra battery help, and they won't be exhausted when they get there.
Can I ask, how long will the battery last? Or how long is the charge, rather?
That's a good question. I know it will last easily a full day of what we needed to do, so, you know, we can easily plug it in each night if we need to. But I believe it actually is going to last quite a few days.
So you won't get all the way out to the outskirts of town and be pedaling back?
No, it's, it's got a much better life than some of the Tesla models and some of these cars.
Ranging anxiety.
It's a small battery, you know, it doesn't use much juice as, you know, something else, so.
Appreciate it. Any further questions? If you do run out of juice, call Counselor Brown. All right. Thank you very much. Would that, anyone wishing to open the public hearing? Anyone which wishes to testify? Does the fire department want to use these, or?
No.
That, we will close the public hearing. Would anybody be opposed to hearing item 41F and 41G together?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
First item is a resolution appropriating the sum of $1,880,000 as a transfer to reserves and authorizing the use of $1,880,000 from fiscal year 2021 general fund assigned fund balance. Second item is a resolution appropriating the sum of $130,000 for the City Hall Door Project, furniture and equipment, key management system and education opportunities, and authorizing the use of $130,000 in reserve funds for these purposes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Members of the council, I'm going to read some of this report.
Nice.
Really interesting.
Did you hear the whole thing?
No, not the whole thing, just, I'll be jumping, just to begin, just to set the, set the tone. So the, we're reporting a, now, this is for fiscal year ending June 2021, so this is this past June. And we're reporting a preliminary general fund surplus of $1,67,700. And we're planning on to allocate $2,800,400 at year-end to assigned fund balance, including $100,000 to be assigned to overlay, a settlement of future abatements, and $820,400 for the amended fiscal year '22 budgetary use of fund balance. That's the recommendation. Also recommending the appropriating $1,880,000 for the city's fiscal year 2021 assigned fund balance as a transfer to trust fund reserves, and I'll go through that below, and appropriating $130,000 to be transferred to the trust fund reserves. Fiscal year 2021 fiscal results were positive and resulted in a surplus reported that I just went over. This is good news considering in the COVID-19 pandemic and the use of $1.5 million in the city's unassigned fund balance for fiscal year 2021. One significant item that contributed to the surplus this year is end property tax collection adjustment that was made August 31st of each year, also known as the 60-day rule adjustment. Most years, this number is $100,000 plus or minus. For fiscal year '21, the increase in property tax revenue is the amount of $1,476,900. The significant change is a result of higher property tax collection rates than the fiscal year previous, previously that were received. Fiscal year '21 general fund actual revenues received exceeded the amended budget by $642,400. So most years, when you look at that, that number is below what we budgeted. We do not, we do not achieve our revenue estimates. This, in this case, we're $642,400 over. Additionally, the city received full reimbursement from the state of New Hampshire for the Fire and Police Department efforts at Steeplegate Mall for vaccinations. I've got some questions that you've asked in the past about all the activities we did, all the thousands of vaccinations that the Fire Department did. We received full reimbursement for those, and we'll see those as, as revenues. Conversely, overall, actual expenditures were under budget by $425,300. That gives you your total surplus of $1,67,700. The basis of the attached resolution, so this is your, as you're looking forward, is the support of needed initiatives that were either not funded in the fiscal year '22 operating budget, or issues that arose in fiscal year '22 budget that was presented or adopted, we're looking ahead to resolve future issues. So the items requested in the resolution that you have in front of you are including $1 million into the highway reserve, which is your paving budget, $530,000 to be put into the equipment reserve, $250,000 to put into the recreation reserve, $100,000 into the economic development reserve. That is your equivalent of $1,880,000. The $100,000 we talked, that I talked about earlier for overlay, and $820,400 for allocation for fiscal year '22 budgetary use of fund balance. The supplemental appropriation to support, and now you can see that, from equipment reserve is $120,000, $40,000 for additional funding for the City Hall Door Access Project. So this is the security that you see going in in the offices around City Hall, on all the doors, or most of the doors. $10,000 to support necessary replacement of, to purchase furniture and equipment, particularly for the new councilors. During the last recession, the city council essentially cut out all the dollars related to equipment replacement and furniture. And we, the only way we actually fund those is through surplus at the end of the year. So if you wanted, if somebody, if you had to replace a chair, so to speak, you go into this, into these funds to replace those. $42,000 for counter replacement in the collections office, so that's to redesign the collections office. $7,000 for a large scanner for the code office. Now, these, these ones here are items that were, that you had as part of the program change request, that were not funded in the budget, because I didn't recommend, because we didn't have enough money to do that. If you'd like to do them now, this is an opportunity. $9,000 for the police department key management system. So this is so the police officers move in and out of the buildings and among offices so that they actually be able to, that system will continue to function. And $12,000 for a scissor lift for downtown services team. This is really the banner replacement program. Instead of, right now, you see an individual with a ladder going pole to pole to pole, and it takes days to actually replace the banners. This would actually speed up that process. And $10,000 into the education reserve, so one of the items that you cut out of the budget during the last recession was, we removed $100,000 in training from all the budgets throughout the city, and this puts $10,000 back in to make those training available. So when departments need training, they either get it through grants, or the dollar, they approach my office, they do an application, and then we make grants available for those training purposes. Then we have, you have your, all your special revenue and enterprise funds, and I'll go through those very briefly. And you can see that under the inspection fund, which, when we do the inspection fund this coming year, we're looking at changing that. The inspection fund was set up years ago so that when we go out and do inspections for private projects, revenues come in, and our expenses are charged against that. But because of COVID, those projects have not been occurring over the last few years. So as Counselor Fantasy has pointed out in the past, though, we're losing those dollars, we're not, we're not bringing enough dollars to offset those costs. We're actually looking at changing that whole program. So the actual, because the projects are down because of COVID, the variance was, compared to budget, we had $37,900, $37,900 less than was budgeted. The parking fund, again, because of COVID and people not parking downtown, remember, this is, this is '21 budget. We were $244,300 under budget. The airport did $26,000 better than budgeted. The golf, Beaver Middle Golf Course did $242,000 better than budgeted. The arena, again, remember, the arena was closed down, the governor closed the arena down, we couldn't use it for a number of, I think it was at least a month. And, of course, that affected programs and the use of the rental of the facility, so we ended up losing $37,900 more than we had budgeted. However, the solid waste fund did $453,000 better than budgeted, the water fund did $438,000 better than budget, and the water, wastewater fund did $1.3 million better than budgeted. So I just want to talk about that, because that one is so far off, that I think you should really take a look at what was driving that. And so we broke that down into, did a deep dive on where those, why that fund did extraordinarily well compared to it has in the past. And what you'll see is the sewer user charges brought in additional $390,000 in revenue. The sewer user charges for towns brought in $152,000, this is what we charge other towns, $152,000 more than usual. The leachate processing program, where we take leachate from other communities, brought in $287,000 more than budgeted. The increase in septic, septic processing, so when you, people can bring septic through RVs or whatever, other ways of doing that, brought in $156,000 more than budgeted. And expenses were under budget by 509,000. So additional revenues, under expenditures, that comes up with your 1.32 million dollars. And be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Fantasy.
Thank you. So I want to start with the last item. How come the expenditures were half a million less than anticipated?
Well, there's several pieces there. We, we had vacancies, so that was about $50,000 in compensation. We had, and also, we were able to save on retiree health costs, that's about $15,000. Repair and maintenance was under budget by about $22,000. Professional services, so we go outside and hire outside consultants. We didn't need to do that as much as we thought we were going to, so we didn't spend the money. That's $199,000. Chemicals were under budget by $20,000. Electricity, we've been doing the energy savings initiatives. We saved $60,000 on energy. And also, we did refunding of our bonds, and we saved $131,000 there. Put them all together, and that's the, the under.
Hello? Thank you. You mentioned right at the beginning of the presentation about how the 60-day look-back recollected far, I mean, every year it's usually around $100,000, it was 1.3, I think was the number. And I know some of that, it seems, was driven by, you know, liens, and there were sales, so these back taxes had to get paid off. Was there anything else, or is there any other lesson we can learn how maybe we can collect more at year-end?
I'll, Brian, come up and talk to you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council? Welcome.
So the, the $1.4 million that we recognize this year as additional revenue in the tax line, it's a bit of an anomaly. And it really is, if you recall, as we were going through the year, I would report on what our tax collection rate was. And every, every time I reported on it, the tax collection rate was much higher than what we were anticipating, and certainly more than what we had thought it was going to be. And, you know, as we looked at that, thinking about the amount of taxes that were paid[1792.01] And, you know, as we looked at that, thinking about the amount of taxes that were paid when people were trans, selling houses, so the, the properties that were sold this past year was just, it was amazing how many properties trend, changed hands. With that happening, the delinquent taxes for two, three, sometimes even a few more years were all paid up. At the end of our accounting cycle on June 30th, we actually have, we do a reconciliation of where all the taxes are, or what, what our accounts receivable are for taxes. And then we have to take, we take that allocation, so we take a charge on our books, so we don't record as much revenue because we, some of those taxes are delinquent. We know we're going to get it eventually, but under accounting standards, we have to take a charge against our books on that. So we don't record quite as much revenue over that period of a few years. What can we learn from it? Well, you know, it's, it's, we do our best to try to collect all the taxes that are due to the city. And if you think about, you know, when we actually go out and collect taxes, we, we call people, you know, the folks at the collections office, you know, when they're not collecting taxes or registering cars, they're actually on the phone trying to work with folks to, try to see if they can come up with a plan to get them to start making payments. And there's always a group of properties that are almost always delinquent taxes. So we continue to try to work on that. But this number could actually go the other way if the tax rate starts to, to go a little bit slower, if the tax collection starts to go a little bit slower, if things get more difficult for people and things like that. So, you know, it's one of those things where this was certainly much more than what we expected this year.
Just real, real quickly. So if you think about the other side of this coin, is that you can only collect those taxes once, right? Once the back taxes are in, they're not coming back in again until people don't pay their taxes again.
Yeah, and they don't pay their taxes again. But then, then we start into, when we do that, that calculation at the end of the fiscal year, usually we do it on around August 31st, because that's when we, we kind of take that 60-day look back afterwards. And if the rate of collection is slowing, then we're actually going to report less revenue in taxes. So it's going to, it's going to cost us a little bit more, we're going to have less revenue coming in. So it, it goes both ways. Usually it's, you know, 100, $200,000 swing one way or the other, but this, this year was definitely a bigger swing. It helped us, you know, because we had used, you know, quite a lot, allocated quite a lot of use of fund balance, so that certainly helped in that category. But, you know, I always, me, the conservative guy always gets concerned, concerned that next year could go a little bit the other way, too.
I just, can I have one, one more follow-up?
So, obviously, it's great, we collected 1.4 million in, I guess, should we assume that that's all back taxes, that number, or is that something else?
Yeah, it, it, a lot of it is back taxes, the increases. Because if you think about, you know, if everybody paid all of their taxes every year, we would collect exact, almost exactly what we budgeted every year. That doesn't happen. The reality is that doesn't happen. So we take that charge, the back taxes, we take an allocation of that to allow for those taxes that haven't been paid. And that's pretty much where we have it.
Okay. Counsel Kitch.
Yes, sort of to this point, a little off topic. As I look forward, not look forward, but as I, I, as I expect inflation to go up, possibly recession to happen, how do we insulate ourselves and how do we, how do we have our buffer for that? How does that happen?
Well, you know, I mean, I guess right now, employment is pretty strong, and there's certainly been a lot of dollars flowing throughout the economy. So taxes have been, you know, pretty stable as far as the collection rates go. As the economy starts to soften a little bit, inflation starts to get a little higher, that does pinch people as far as, you know, make, being able to make their tax payments. We get concerned about that. That's why we try to keep in touch with folks before they get too far out. But there's, again, always a group of people that really have a difficult time paying their taxes.
Do you, is it something you fear? I mean, you're-
Is it something I fear?
You're a pretty conservative guy.
I'm a pretty conservative guy, yes.
And I appreciate that.
Yep. I, I fear that, I, I fear that all the time, you know. I, I guess the other side of that coin a little bit, too, is as inflation increases, usually the tax, the interest rate usually increases a little bit, so then we start to see a little bit more interest income. So, you know, try to balance all those things out. You know, I don't want to cry wolf on anything, but there are always things that I get concerned about and make sure that, you know, we are collecting all the dollars that are due to the city in all areas.
Thank you.
Ms. Hawkins?
Thank you. I don't expect you to know this tonight, but I would be interested to know how many people paid up on their taxes who were doing it through home sale, and so they're back paying to get ready for that versus just folks who paid up and we didn't know if there was any particular reason why they did that. The reason why I'm interested is it occurs to me that over the last couple of years through the funds our congressional delegation has secured for stimulus checks and child tax credit payments and things like that, one of the things that, part of the dialogue had been that that would help people with expenses like this, and I'd be curious to see if that had any impact on this particular situation.
I'll do my best to try to find that information. However, it's not something that would normally be readily available to us. What we, I can tell you that what we do see is that, you know, with the large number of transactions that have occurred this past year, we did see those back taxes getting paid. So I'll do my, certainly do my very best to try to find information to see if it's, you know, people are just paying their taxes to get ready for the sale of their house. But that's not typically how it happens. Most of those, you know, a lot of times, folks don't pay their taxes because they don't have the cash flow to do it. They'll get the cash flow when they sell their property.
Thank you.
You?
No.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Zouz. Any further questions for the manager, anyone else? Okay, let's open the public hearing. Anyone who wants to testify on either one of these two items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Takes us to our action phase. Madam Clerk, item 42, please.
Yes, it's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title IV Zoning Code, Chapter 28 Zoning Ordinance, Article 28-2, Zoning Districts and Allowable Uses, Section 28-2-4, allowable principal and accessory uses in zoning districts, Paragraph J, Table of Principal Uses by amending the Table of Principal Use, E, Medical.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion? Approval?
Second.
Just to be clear, you're moving approval on supplemental ordinance 3. Is that correct?
That is correct, Your Honor.
Is everybody clear with that? Okay. Discussion. Counselor's office.
Thank you. I was wondering, could somebody tell me whether the planning committee actually ended up doing a final vote on the final version? I know that it was listed in the documents, so that just at the December 15th meeting, they weren't prepared to vote on the amendment.
Mr. Baye, do you have that answer?
So at the December 15th meeting, what happened is the original amendment was the CBP and the CN district at that meeting. And Counsel Champlin, you can speak to this because I believe you're the one that, that raised it that evening on the planning board. Counsel Champlin suggested that CG be considered as well. My interpretation that evening was that the, the planning board didn't really get into that discussion about, about the CG, and basically left it up to the city council whether they wanted to consider that as part of their process.
Thank you.
Anything further since Mr. Baye is here? No, thanks. Okay, we have a motion before us. Any further discussion?
I actually do have one other question, but I'm not sure if, um-
Okay.
It's for Mr. Ray.
Sorry, I didn't recognize you before. Come on back.
Sorry. I'm not sure this section for you. Do we have any report on how this will overlay with public transportation? I think we've all gotten the concerns from community members about whether or not the locations where people could set up some of these services are walkable and available by public transport.
So I can, I can speak to the clinics we have in the community today. None of the clinics is located in any of these districts. So they're located in Gateway, they're located in Opportunity Corridor. Those are the two districts, basically, where we see most of this. So they have, that model has figured out a way where that works for them. The Gateway District has bus transportation nearby, believe it goes through the Loudoun Road Corridor. OCP has, if you're on the northern part of the OCP, it probably has bus transportation as well. The southern part of the OCP, not as direct, I mean, it's quite a distance, but there is one, a facility, actually substance, just a sort of treatment facility is actually located in the OCP. And so for, for their model, it seemed to work. They have a parking facility. I think that also a lot of people actually do come in in vehicles before work to get their treatment and then go off to, to the, to the day.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Brown?
Yes, actually, thank you. I, this, along the same lines about transportation. So just in reading the report, it looks like E6 is allowed in zones CU, GWP, OCP, OFP, CVP, and IS. It's basically all the same, all of, as the same area zoned for E3 except for CG, CN, and CBP. So if someone was looking at a potential site for one of these clinics, and they wanted to look at public transportation, they could look at, say, the crosstown bus line, and they could see that, you know, this area is available and it is zoned, OCP therefore would be available.
Correct.
So there are actual, there are actually quite a few areas zoned that would allow for this type of clinic.
As I mentioned in the report, the majority of his zoning districts were still allowed for it.
I did. I looked at the, the, the public transportation of the three lines as well as the zoning districts, and I, I was impressed with how much space there is available for clinics.
Any further questions with Mr. Baye? Thank you again.
Thank you.
By the way, I want to stand corrected. I made a mistake. It is supplemental report 3. It's actually supplemental ordinance 2, so just make sure we all on the same page.
Are you going to amend the motion?
Yeah. If we, that, why don't we do that? Is that okay?
I will amend my motion to move the approval of supplemental ordinance. Those.
Two.
Two.
That's fine. Supplemental is good.
The clerk understands my mistakes.
It just says supplemental ordinance.
Okay, cool. Any further discussion? Okay, are we ready for, are we ready for the vote?
Yes, like a roll call?
Okay.
Madam Clerk, perfect.
Good.
Counselor Kitch.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Counsel Cradwick.
Yes.
Counsel Mattson.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel McNamara.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Pierce.
Yes.
Counsel Royce Hawkins.
Yes.
Counsel Todd.
Yes.
Counsel Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Champlin.
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
Yes. And the motion's adopted. Okay, Madam Clerk, item 43, please.
Yes, it's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 35, Classification and Compensation Plan, Schedule D of Article 35-2, Class specification index for the network security engineer position.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded multiple times. Any discussion? Seeing none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the ayes have it. Item 44 is recessed. Item 45, please.
It's a resolution appropriating a sum of $67,637 to continue the work of reducing energy usage at the Hall Street Wastewater Treatment Plant, CIP number 104, and accepting the sum of $67,637 from the Unitil New Hampshire Saves Energy Efficiency Incentive Rebate Program.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve this. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, ready for the question? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, have received necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 46, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $18,771 to launch an e-bike bookmobile outreach program and accepting the sum of $18,771 using Federal American Rescue Plan Act grant funds.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion?
Counsel Fantasy. I just want to make a couple of comments. One, it sounds like a great idea, but I do have a couple of concerns. I want to really make sure, I, I've used e-bikes on some really tough terrain, not going up and down these streets. And I do think it's going to be really important to make sure that we train people appropriately. I'm a lawyer, I always see risks, so I can see workers' comp claims coming up before, if we don't have people appropriately trained, if you're putting a trailer on the back, that's really going to impact things. So I just want to make sure that we really, I think it's a great concept. I think it could be really a great way for the library to, to advertise and get people involved, but I want to make sure we roll it out in a very safe manner.
Anyone else? Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Ready for the question? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it, have been received in S A two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 47, please.
Yes, it's a resolution appropriating the sum of $1,880,000 as a transfer to reserves and authorizing the use of $1,880,000 from fiscal year 2021 general fund assigned fund balance.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, ready for the question? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, have received necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 48, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $130,000 for the city hall door project, furniture and equipment, key management system and education opportunities, and authorizing the use of $130,000 in reserve funds for these purposes.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? None? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, have received necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Concludes our public hearings for this evening. Does anybody need a two-second break, or are we good? Okay, we'll take a two-minute recess. Wait, did you say yes you want to win or not?
No, I said I'm good.
It affects that of the demographics of your group. You know, in areas where we have better access to healthcare, better jobs, higher, better economy, tend to depend less on emergency services. Where if your demographics shifts in the other direction, they tend to depend more on it. That's the only real thing to have accessible to them. So here's a station location analysis. And like I said, the real meat and potatoes of this is where do we want to be tomorrow? Because where we want to be tomorrow is going to affect very much the decision we make today. And so first, let's do an overview and see how are we performing today? So from our four locations, we mapped these locations out in a four-minute travel time using the same kind of predictive software like Google Maps or Waze would use to figure out how far you can get. And this one would be on Monday morning at 8:00 AM. What percentage of our call volume can we get within that four minutes? So we can get a baseline. And so your baseline's about 70%. And that was for your 2020 incident data. All right? So next, we said, well, what does an optimized system look like if we keep our current four stations? If we wiggle these stations around a little bit, we can go up to almost 79% just from station placement. The most important piece of this whole chunk are the staff. You know, the station, it sounds like a lot, four or five million dollars. But when you also consider that an engine company crew of three is probably a million a year for perpetuity, the actual station in the facility is a very minimal cost in the big picture. And so, so we started off with the four and then we did the optimize, we picked up about 9%. And so then next, we said, well, what would it look like if we keep our four locations and we add a fifth? So if we keep our four stations, we add a fifth location, it's almost identical to us optimizing at four. And so four stations optimized is, in your system at least, is almost the same as if you had five not optimized. And with staff being the most expensive part of this whole equation, we then decided, okay, we need to take some further analysis to make sure we've given you all some good options. It's good things to consider. So we said, okay, well, what if we decide what we need are five stations overall? How does this change the analysis? When we do this, if you look at those stars compared to the stations, one, five, and seven are very close to their current location. And what happens is we've put a station on one side of four and on the other side of four, and we go up to almost, you know, 87%. So now we've picked up quite enough, you know, almost the same we got before, but we just moving, you know, this is optimizing all, but we'll look at the next one where we keep three of your stations at their current sites and add those two optimized, and we dropped down to about 86%. So we're within about 1% now at a five-station model where we know three of our stations are in the right place. We optimize where our hotel growth is occurring to the southeast and push it out a little further west for our growth out there. And now we've significantly improved, we've improved, you know, about 15% overall. And so then we messed around with some current locations just to see what would happen with some of the ideas. So we moved station one down to the Store Street location. We're dropping a few percent off of current performance. You know, it's not the end of the world. If it's, sometimes, you know, a performance, degradation of performance or improvement of performance, the juice may be worth the squeeze on, okay, we have a better site, we have a better facility for the folks, we can do these other things we need to do. And so, you know, there may be a decision point there of what makes the most sense for you all. Then we ran it as well, we moved seven to the south. Again, we degraded a little bit more again. But I think that's a conversation to have with your fire chief and with the staff and, you know, can we lose a few percentage points here if we do some other things there and overall make our system better? And then finally, we just have a summary of the information I presented to you. The big question is, do we need, do we want to be four stations or five stations in the future? If we're four stations, one option you can always do is you maintain status quo. We know what that looks like and, you know, we know how the performance looks. Next, we could optimize the four stations. Most, pretty much all your facilities are in need of some sort of, you know, fairly considerable renovation. And so, you know, if we're putting that money in, if we're, if we have the ability to move some of these stations, maybe that's the better answer for you. Option C would be, we simply add a fifth station within there and move, just, you know, that's basically a station four, and move that around. The next point is if you're five stations, we add that fifth. All right, next one? And then finally, and I think this is probably the smarter answer to really put some weight into, is more or less maintain the locations of one, five, and seven. Put a station over in your commercial area, and then when you're ready to pull the trigger on that final, put the station on the other side. And now we've got the stations that we need in the future and we're planning for the future accomplishing the best we can do with the resources available. And so with that, just have a few recommendations is generally overall. The fire stations need to be rehabilitated and rebuilt. And so some of that may look at, will the site actually facilitate that, the needs we have? Probably should have a suppression unit with pump capability in the central station as well as an ambulance. We saw from our mapping that the downtown areas are the hottest spots we have, is 70% EMS, and our performance is lacking, and it's most likely due to these outlying units trying to come in. Now they're out of pocket and there are no resources to come back up to them. In your central station, you have admin and a comm center, and there's a lot of things really shoehorned in that one area. And that's why I don't want to pigeonhole you all into the idea of thinking, we have to do this, we have to do that. There may be some other options available. And administration doesn't necessarily need to be with operations. They could be in a different location. And then the same with the comm center. We did the tour through that. They've really got a lot of stuff crammed into that building and they are where they're at. And then finally, and this is fairly common for New England, administratively, your staff very lean. Communication is typically the number one problem you encounter in any organization, you know, fire, police, or general government or what have you. But if your administrators are so busy treading water that they don't have time to interact and talk and listen to their folks, you'll start seeing those communication issues come up. So that may be something you want to address as well. And so with that, I covered a lot of ground very quickly in the interest of y'all getting back home for Valentine's Day. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
There is not going to be a quiz after this.
Thank you, Mr. McCutcheon. What sort of renovations do these stations need? You said they're extensive and...
I will defer to the fire chief. He had a study conducted with the structural integrity of all these buildings. And I can, and I'm not an architect or engineer, but I can tell you just in passing and looking, you know, things like cracks in foundations, spalling in buildings. But with that, I'll defer to the fire chief to respond to that question.
The city undertook that significant facilities condition assessment, and the fire department was part of that study as well. And like Mr. McCutcheon indicated, we do have cracks in floors and foundations, electrical systems, plumbing systems, HVAC systems, separation of turnout gear from the apparatus floor. So the turnout gear is out with the apparatus, exposed to diesel and exhaust and things of that nature. And the oil and water separators are being a challenge with us in the firehouses right now. So there's been significant amount of deferred maintenance over the years, and it's, it's starting to show.
Thank you. Alton Brown.
So I noticed on the, the stars where you had, you know, potential stations, how did you determine that location? Did you actually look at the site or was it just based on the call volume?
Well, what it did is, you know, you never know what's possible and look and see what can we do. So basically, I set a grid of random points across the entire city, probably in the neighborhood of 2,500 to 3,000 candidate locations. And so then with your actual call volume, you know, given the number of stations, either four or five, I want to, I want to have the largest service area that I can have while also capturing the greatest amount of within a four-minute predicted travel time. And so then with that, it goes, there's all thousands of combinations and select sites. But again, as you look through that, when we look through the other analyses, and I say, we don't necessarily want to hang your hat on anything, but look at the global picture for that overall feeling of reliability and results. We could see where that incident locations were, where population density is located, our travel times. And so it kind of makes sense, these stations want to be there because where the action is.
Thank you. I've got a number of questions, but I'll loom my time. How do you factor in the fact that after 5:00, we're a city of 45,000 people during the work week, we're suddenly 100,000 people?
I think...
How do you balance that?
I think what, really the way to do it, and what I would suggest for y'all to do is to adopt performance thresholds or trigger points, if you will. So let's say, for example, we decided, or you decided as a commission, you know, for 90% of our calls, we want that first unit on scene within seven and a half minutes of dispatch. Well, right now, you're not there. And so, you, as you're looking at different options, I would suggest to do for some of those is maybe try upstaffing an ambulance downtown for 60 days or 90 days. Let's look and see what that impact is. If all of a sudden our performance goes through the roof, we found the solution, and now we can know whether or not we're justifying, you know, basically those eternal funds to staff that unit. But as far as population goes, you know, like I said, there's only really ever two problems. You can't get there from here, or there's not enough units to service the demand. You start seeing your call concurrency rates spread out more and more where, you know, very few of them are single incidents, a lot of multi- incidents. Unit hour utilization rates, crews are in excess of 25% of their time, they're committed to an emergency response. And it doesn't sound like much at the end of the day, if you're used to working an eight-hour day and say, well, I've committed 100% of my time when I'm at work, but they're there for 24 hours. And in some cases, they're for 48 hours. And you start thinking about, when you exceed a certain amount of time that you're running, it just, you know, truck drivers can only go eight hours or 12 hours, depending on the state and what they're going. But, you know, we can drive 40-ton vehicles around and never take a break all day long. And so, you know, I think with your employee, you know, happiness with their job and some of these things, look at that performance, look at their unit hour utilization, and look at all these factors and take them in as a global view of where do we want our standards to be?
Not to interrupt, but just as a follow-up, is there any value or effectiveness to adding, for instance, an additional ambulance during the day and not overnight?
That may be a good place to start. And like I said, you know, an easy way to do it initially without really, you know, blowing the bank is, you know, maybe we put two folks on overtime, 12 hours a day or eight hours a day, or whatever you, you know, working with the fire chief, whatever you decide is reasonable. And let's look and see what that does to our overall performance and trends and response times. And then from there, we have information to make an informed decision. And that's really what, you know, what I'm hoping to do here today is to give you all the information to make the best decision for you and not here to tell you what you need to do or what you should do. Thank you.
Thank you. This was interesting. Stuart, you talked a little bit when you were doing the time chart. You spoke about 911. And, and you said it was about a three-minute delay on average by the time it got to the emergency provider?
At the 90th percentile, it was a three-minute.
Okay. So do you see the 911 system as a problem?
I think it's problematic, just the way in that it's set up. And I, you know, I don't know that there's an easy, easy solution for it because there's a few very, you know, large cities in New Hampshire, but then there's a lot of very rural areas that without that state PSAP or public answering point...
It's a PSAP.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't be able to get their dispatch at all, probably. So, you know, you can always work with agencies to, you know, help them get better. But like I said, if Nashua had the actual raw data and we could see it, and that's how we derive that answer for you all, and the way your CAD system's configured, we couldn't see that information. So, you know, I don't, I can't say for certain, this is what Joel's time would be as well. But I can say for certain, this is what it is in Nashua, and they're not that far away. And we just did that study, you know, a year ago.
We just finished their strategic plan, and as a department, they've made it a citywide goal now that they're going to be working to bring awareness to that at the fire chief level within the state and talk about what options might be available for improvement. So that may be something you want to join in as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. McCutcheon, during your study, did you look at all at staffing patterns that would be required for the five-station model?
Typically, when you add a station, you already have your staffing pattern of, say, a three-person engine company or whatever your standard would be. You know, what I would tell you is that I think you need to grow as you have the ability and your tax base has the ability to support it. Certainly not telling you to go out there and start adding things tomorrow that's going to put some kind of a burden on, on your community. But if we know 75%, or I'm sorry, about 70% of our demand is EMS, and we know that, and we can look at the map and see the little hexagons and the colors they are, and if we have that growth in that area and we can't get there from here, you know, you may consider, you know, maybe first we add an ambulance, or maybe we add an engine that's just ALS or advanced life support EMS capable, and then work towards an ambulance or really any combination thereof. But, you know, I think as long as you are taking the information and considering it globally and making an informed decision, then that your community can support and get behind and afford, then you made the right one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, given what we're taking for the information, I'm just getting a bit of overview of not necessarily adding a fifth station, but adding potentially, either moving some personnel around or an ambulance, or adding an ambulance and personnel would get us quite a bit better than we are at the moment.
Yeah, well, and I could run through it real quick, but basically here is, here is the crux, I want to get across, is that a, there we go. If you decide to go with a four-station model, the answer is going to be different than if you decide to go with a five-station model. If you go with a four-station model, you probably need to move all four stations. Well, they all need significant improvements anyway at some point in the not-too-distant future, so that may not be a bad idea for you. But in understanding that, if we say, well, we need to leave our four stations alone and add a fifth, that's going to change some things because with, at a five-station model, three of your stations are in pretty good spots, and you could really just relocate one group and add a final fifth, and you would have as good a performance as if you were able to wave the magic wand and obtain all the, those locations, the land for it and the like in a four-station scenario. You know, maybe the answer is probably going to lie more of, we can't do four today, but, or five today, but maybe we could do it at some point in the future and then start rolling things in on your CIPs for, you know, developments or apparatus and things of that nature and build towards it, knowing that if you were to relocate four and you're ultimately going for that five, we've got some ideas where that would need to go. And so then when we add that fifth, now our system's not only optimized, so we have the stations in the right place, but we, you were able to plan to get there as well.
Thank you.
Will you look across the country at these, these types of studies? Do you have different, or do communities use different measurements in terms of response times for distances for larger communities? So, for example, you did Nashua, Nashua or in Manchester, if you put them together, they're not as big as Concord, right? So, and I'm sure you're dealing, you're from the south, it sounds like. So, right, so you're...
Southern New York.
So you're dealing on a county level, so there's very large distances to travel. And Concord is largest distance to travel. But if I'm living on Spring Street versus I'm living on the Hockington line, is it common for people to expect someone who's living 10 miles outside of downtown to receive the same response time as the person who's living next to the station?
Yeah, and that's a really good question. And fundamentally, I think that's, you know, the question that you all should ask yourself. If everybody pays the same, should everybody receive the same level of service? Or we only have a given number of funds available to do this, do we do the best and most we can for the most people that we can? And then knowing if I live 15 miles from downtown down dirt roads, I simply can't expect that higher level of performance. And so we only have one year of data, and this really wasn't the focus of this study. But what we'll do a lot of times is we'll break areas up into different service demand zones. So let's say we have a downtown or urban area, we'll be there in four minutes. If you're greater than three miles from a fire station but closer than five, we'll be there in six minutes. And then everything outlying, you know, is whatever the number is. But then we can align some expectations and it's easy to figure out, they go, okay, how far am I from a fire station? This is what I can expect. But then again, by adopting those trigger points, let's say all, you know, we start sliding, we can't even maintain our own goals that we've set that we used to be able to do, that's going to be indicative of, demand's gone up, either we can't get there from here, we need a station somewhere else, or we need another unit staffed at a current location, the service demand in that area has grown.
That brings me to a similar question because unlike places in the south and the west where fire departments are regional, usually by counties, for instance, in here, in this part of the country, it's very localized. So one of the issues that have, I've always questioned is this whole idea of mutual aid. Like, how often do we leave Concord to help out the town next door, and how often do they come in here? And I, I think that's part of the equation as well.
I think so because you're surrounding, you know, again, it was like when we were talking about the PSAP. You know, there's Nashua, you all, you know, there's only a handful of cities that are, you know, really of good size, and there's a lot of rural. And so same thing with your surrounding departments, you know, volunteer fire departments, and they have jobs during the daytime. So if there's a fire out there at 2:00 in the afternoon on Monday, it's probably going to be Concord responding to that and putting that fire out, not those folks. However, if you catch them on a weekend, and the night, you know, at night, they may have a very good turnout. And so, you know, I don't, didn't have any information available to me, but just sort of anecdotally, that's probably the answer, because we've done a lot of...
I think that's part of the equation.
Volunteer departments. But, you know, I think working with them, and, you know, there may be opportunities there for interlocal agreements. So perhaps, I'm just looking at the map up here, but, you know, let's say maybe five's up there at the top, and we can see that demand stretching outside of town, those are actual responses you went to. Maybe it's a conversation of, hey, you know, when, you know, this volunteer fire department can't provide coverage during the day, would you entertain the idea of an interlocal where we provide those services for a cost? Or maybe we'll guarantee that 24/7 coverage to you for an annual rate or something to that effect?
I'm thinking about compensation.
It's not nearly as expensive for them as a fire department, but now they've guaranteed service all the time, and you're not, you know, just giving it away. And there's a lot of different ways to approach and do that. And, you know, as much as anything, just if we have this baseline understanding of where we're at, it's a lot easier to figure out where we're going. And so you've got that baseline assessment now.
I come from Connecticut, I did my entire career there, so I completely understand what you're saying, but you're absolutely right, it's the data set. And those are some difficult conversations to have. When a volunteer fire company's struggling, you need to have the data. So you probably do want to start tracking both coming in and going out and getting a feel for what the demand on your service is and what services you might be willing to provide.
Thank you.
We collect the data, right?
Yes, we do collect the data on mutual aid in and out, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. A lot of information. Can't, can't say I took it all in, but I tried. A couple of things, sort of picking up on a couple of the conversations or questions people ask. So on mutual aid, what sticks out to me is the timeframes in which our neighboring communities need our support is also our high demand time when we've got, you know, 100,000 people in our city. Is there, other than, you know, adding more personnel, I mean, is there anything we can do to address that type of issue?
Well, you know, again, it just, the fundamental or simplest way to put it is, you know, fire rescue or EMS, either you can't get there from here, you don't have a station anywhere near the demand, or there's not enough units to service the demand. So I may have a station, and if that unit has a unit hour utilization rate of, say, you know, 30, 35%, which is pretty common in large metro-type systems, I mean, you know, we're getting in the neighborhood of a third of the time, that unit could be an hour away at a hospital. Because it isn't just the time they're committed to the call, they've got to go to the hospital, they hold the wall for 45 minutes to an hour, and then they've got to drive back, come into service before they even get into zone. And so, you know, I think really that, you know, the way to wade off into those is to make informed decisions with the information. If we think the answer is, let's say we think the answer is we ought to, we should add a, another ambulance crew in downtown. You know, let's maybe add one for eight hours a day on overtime for 30 days or 60 days, pull the data back, look at the results, and then make an informed decision, and we've not committed ourselves to anything to perpetuity. Yes, sir?
If I may, Counselor, we also, similar to fire prevention that we do to try to reduce the fire incidence, we do engage in efforts to reduce our EMS through relationships with VNA referrals, through the Project FIRST program, through relationships with River Ben. So we're, we're doing everything that we can to, to develop relationships that will help reduce the EMS call volume when we can.
This, this wasn't a staffing study, so we didn't really look per se at the Fire Marshal's Office staffing, but, you know, that may be another opportunity. When we look at false alarms and things, if they had additional staff in some of those offices, they may be able to take on more prevention efforts in order to take the call volume down. But again, that wasn't within the scope of the study, so we can't really speak to the numbers there.
So I'm, I'm seeing the data, and, you know, 70% of the calls are EMS and only 3% are fire. So I'm wondering, first, how does that compare to what you see nationally? And sort of second, are you seeing a change in the type of apparatus that departments have? Do they have more ambulances and less fire equipment because, you know, 70% of what they're doing is actually EMS?
Well, the, I think, so fire and EMS for, you know, forever, basically until maybe 20 years ago, were different career paths. You know, it was like law enforcement, you fire EMS or law enforcement, they're different. The reason that fire departments started taking on the emergency medical part of it was because we got a lot, a lot better at writing and enforcing fire codes and laws. So, you know, not so much the case in New England because there's a lot of historic buildings, but building over the, older than 30 years in Florida, you know, is not that common. And so a lot of these buildings are under modern fire codes, so they just don't have the fires. And so to justify something, you know, some of the need for the folks because, you know, you can't put a commercial structure fire out with three people. I guess you could eventually, but it's pretty tough. Eventually it'll burn down in the slab and then you can get it. So the other, other option is EMS because if I'm in a station and somebody's having a cardiac arrest across the street, we can very, very quickly get out there and initiate initial care while that ambulance is en route. So, you know, what I think you see in systems that transport is, you, the, the transport is, is a major element of that. And so, you know, the, the fire part is like having insurance, and basically your, your density of firefighters is your risk tolerance for that. You know, we, we kind of joked, you can't put that fire out with three people, at least not do anything to save the foundation. And so, you know, those are some of the conversations, and that's called an effective response force, how quickly we're getting folks out to there. But let's say you have three people on an engine at a station today, there's not enough firefighters there to do, to, to meet that, the OSHA two-in, two-out, so they can't do interior firefighting. They'll go outside, they'll pop a window, kowtow it inside and hope for the best, but that's all they can do until someone else shows up. And so basically, there you, there's a risk tolerance decision of that additional person will take the risk on maybe losing a house or a couple of other rooms inside on that fire. But again, that's a, that's a community decision, not saying whether anyone's right, wrong, or indifferent for doing it, you know, but as long as you understand the risk and have the data to make a good decision.
Thank you. I appreciate the detailed report and like Counselor Fantasy, there was a lot to absorb there. However, from the residential point of view, I look at a four-minute response time, sounds great, but when you're adding three minutes, now you're at seven minutes, and the majority of the calls are likely a heart attack, you're gone. That three minutes is significant. And if there are areas in our city where we're not getting there until 11 minutes, you're gone. It's still five to 10 minutes for a heart attack, correct?
Yep.
So we got a problem. And I think that that's ultimately what we need to be looking at is that if the majority of our calls are heart attacks, which in most communities, that's what it is, we've got panicked family members sitting there over someone that we can't get to. Thank, thank you again for all your efforts, I appreciate it.
That's why Tom lives out in the rural section. I move downtown.
That's why I am downtown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, one of the questions I have might be more for the chief, but one of the things that I think, are you tracking the amount of time that you're, when you bring somebody to the hospital, those times are increasing before you can get back out again? The amount of time that you're spending, once you deliver to the hospital, you're not absolutely, there's a certain amount of time that you have to be there.
Yeah, so we do track those times currently due to some of the circumstances that were discussed at the last council meeting with the challenges of staffing.
Right.
Some of it, a lot of it brought on by COVID is keeping our units out of service longer.
Right, so it is in general.
Yes.
And so this is adding to, it's adding to the overall, I mean, they've brought us a lot of information, but this is another added piece that's causing issues where you can't get people back out onto the, to the next call.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Obviously, we have some information to consider here, which is basically improve, add a fifth station, what do we want to be? In, in your field of study, or even in the context of this particular review, could you look at options for outsourcing emergency transport, emergency services? emergency services?
We didn't in this because this was strictly focused as a station location study. And so we were looking at your current conditions to be able to provide the baseline for some of these recommendations as a point of comparison. So, you know, having a third-party ambulance service is, you know, it's not always the better way to go. And so the reason I say that is because, you know, one, you lose control over a public service. You know, someone else is doing, you have, you're contractually, they're working for you, but if you can't control the employees, you can't really do anything if the customer service is bad. So there's some things to consider with that. The other would be, you know, looking at the overall cost of, you know, let's say just for the sake of argument, we would spend $5 million a year on an ambulance contract. Well, we still need those firefighters that we had there before. We can't really lose anybody. And so then you kind of have to weigh it out and say, well, you know, if we didn't change our staffing any because we already have about the minimum people we can get away with as firefighters, and we could transport before, are we getting the best utilization out of our resource? And again, that's a, you know, a decision, you know, I think certainly you can collect some information on that. But you could also check with departments in Connecticut and ask them about their experience of using, you know, those types of services.
Counselor Jefferson. As a follow-up to Counselor Nian's question, isn't it fair to say that one of the downsides of outsourcing is that, you know, you're outsourcing to a for-profit business? And so they're not just looking at the cost of providing the service, they're also looking at a profit margin for themselves.
Absolutely.
Which the city does not do. The city is essentially not trying to create a profit through its EMS and its fire service.
Yeah, and I guess that's kind of the point I was trying to make, is that you have an essential public service that you really don't have control over when it's contracted out to a third party. And so, you know, it'd just be a decision point for you is what's more important, level of service or potentially saving a little money in that service.
Paul, Your Honor? Yes, please. So, obviously, the Concord has always staffed the EM, EMS service, something that we believed in, and I believe in it. We're looking at, obviously, a big price tag item. One of the main focuses is response times. Have you seen any models where there is a private-public partnership in these types of services where you have a core base staffed by, you know, arguably our existing model, where you supplement it with contracted services?
Well, I think the question to ask, I mean, I'd be honest with you, the actual answer, I just, I don't know, because we didn't look at any of this stuff. But I think the first would be, is there even a service available in this area? And that would be the first question to ask, because, you know, you've got Concord, and there's not a lot of other demand around it. You know, it's not as though we're in a metro area where we already have those private ambulance services running. So that would be the first question, is would it even be available? And then if it were available, would they be able to allocate enough units to you to meet your demands for what you're willing to pay? Because they have to be profitable. And so if you're, you know, let's say we want three ambulances, they say, we can't be profitable at three, we'll give you two during the daytime and one at night. And when you do the math, you may end up paying just as much as you were paying before to initially staff it. So, you know, I wouldn't, I'm not saying that I wouldn't at least, you know, entertain the idea and start looking at initial information, but it may be that, you know, there's not even an ambulance service in this area that could, would be able to service you in that kind of arrangement.
It's almost a study in and of itself with all those options. And I have done some projects where there were private partnerships. I helped take one apart after it failed to be successful for the municipality because they did bring in contracted firefighters, and they put them on the same fire trucks with the city employees. And it created a whole host of issues that they just didn't see coming when they started it. So I would tell you that there's a lot of moving parts and pieces to that, and it really is a study unto itself if you were to look at something of that nature.
There is a comparison. Manchester has a private ambulance service, and I...
Nashville's doing AMR as well.
From what I hear, it does not work very well.
Again, you have to look at your study and decide what's important to your community.
You guys ride right down the middle.
For firefighters.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just want to share three quick things. First of all, I hope that you will put this on the city website, so that people in the community can take a look at it if they wish. And obviously, counselors, make sure you have a copy and, a full copy, because there's a lot of data here. Second thing is just purely anecdotal, but I'll share this with you. I've done this for a couple of years now. And when I first started, we used to contract out all kinds of studies and such for consultants. And we got such a poor response, the council kind of pulled back, and we really stopped and did a lot of things in-house, whatever. And it's only been more recently that we've actually gone out to experts and used consultants and such. This may be one of the best presentations, one of the most data-driven reports that I've received in 25 years.
Thank you.
So, well done. Well done.
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't just point out that the fire department was really easy to work with, very responsive, and just really made the whole project enjoyable for us. We travel the country, and it's not always quite that much of a positive experience. Thank you to Chief and his staff for that.
So if I'm not on your brochure, no, I'm just kidding.
Soundbite at the end of the picture from the website.
But please put the information out there. I think all the counselors should see all the data and as well as the community. I think that'd be very helpful.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything else? Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
So, we have no new business, no unfinished business. Do we have anything anybody else would like to share?
I did.
Counselor Carter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mostly for the people at home, if you didn't get a chance to see the recreation department's report in the consent agenda, it was one of the best reports I've seen. It's got color, it's got great numbers, short little paragraphs. It was perfect. The other thing I would mention is that the consent agenda had the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. For the businesses in the Concord area, they are applying for a grant, it's a partnership with the city of Concord, for tax credits through CDFA. They are asking people, by businesses, to give letters of support from now until February 28. And you can do so by seeking out information on their website, friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. It's an org, so it's a .org. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go with Counselor Carter.
I just want to say that Concord's having their first food truck and cornhole competition fundraiser to raise money for the Monkey Around Playground at White Park. It will be Sunday, May 15. The tournament's at 11:00 a.m. You can register a team for $50. You can also, and any business or group can purchase their own logos to be put on their cornhole game, and that, you'll get to keep the game. So that's another way to sponsor the event, by putting your logo out there on your own game.
Counselor Brenner.
So I just want to reiterate what Counselor Kretovic said. That was a fantastic report by the recreation department. They had, they trained 492 kids in swim lessons, and there were about over 10,000 people that attended the pools. So I just, you know, that is such a great community feature for everyone. And I really appreciate you bringing up the Merrimack River Greenway Trail because shared spaces, our parks, our pools, our libraries are so important for us to come together. So thank you for bringing that up.
I'll just simply add, it's a great example where recreation does it, but it's actually the Concord Housing Authority, which funds it and supports it. So it's one of those partnerships we have with the community and the city. I think it's really important to note that the Concord Housing Authority has stepped up, I think, three or four years in a row now to do that.
Do they have it for this year as well?
The lessons.
The lessons?
Find out.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else have anything?
Does it?
Okay. Counselor Fezey?
Just want to wish a happy birthday to my mom today.
She's not watching, but... She'll get the tape.
I'll find the tape, Mark.
He's looking for a big check.
And of course, Happy Valentine's Day to my wife, who is probably in bed by now.
I didn't see the flower order, though, for you.
Well, since we don't birthdays, Counselor, happy birthday to you.
There's nothing happy about 60.
Yeah, there is.
If you're older than 60.
Well, on my 60th, I went to the summit in Mount Washington.
Well, when these guys were talking about EMS, you know, I started thinking, and... I've done CPR five times. I'm zero for five. I've lost them all.
All right. It's great. Listen, can you top that?
No, sir.
All right. We have one item for suspense, cutting a motion to suspend rules to take up...
Subsumed.
Motion made and seconded by everyone to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, item suspense one, please.
Yes, it's a resolution appropriating the sum of $200,000 for improvements to the state street parking garage, CIP 432, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the amount of up to $200,000. And staff's recommending you set it for a March 14 public hearing.
The way of motion.
Subsumed. Second.
Motion is to set item suspense one for a public hearing on March 14. Everybody clear the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and the ayes have it. That concludes, if I'm not mistaken, our events for this evening. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. We have motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made and seconded by everyone to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and the ayes have it. Have a wonderful week.